My life.
We understand that.
Yeah.
I keep everything in there.
That's the excuse.
Oh, I know. It's what we use for. For Exale used to be professional. So how many of us? Now it's just real easy. I could whip my own. Now it's a charade.
So this has combined with some shares.
Yeah.
So it might be the choice.
I didn't realize it was coming out there.
It's not used that. No, I'd use to use it. See, I'm using my or.
Oh, I would agree. That's a miracle.
Yeah, it's trying to get a charge.
My first job.
But I can't believe that was a second.
At the business school, we did a lot of financial analysis.
You know, we have so many.
Thirty pounds searching. And if you made a mistake up here, we realized it was. You're compounding your own effect. I think you knew those numbers.
How are you? Good, thank you. How do I do? How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Settle down. Settle down.
I see. This is like, what are those? This is the type of uses in my.
What do you think?
Oh, yeah. We'll get it here. I don't want to worry. I can't.
Pretty still jet lag.
A little bit.
Do you know your medical information?
A little bit.
How long?
Yeah.
Fourteen hours.
I know what else to tell.
What's the time?
No.
So they're ahead.
Just go home.
And we hold it against you.
Fourteen hours ahead of Trinidad.
This is actually documented.
Exactly twelve hours ahead of New York.
Is real.
So do you fly from the west coast there?
Right, so whether you fly New York or LA, you pretty much just go straight north over.
Over the pole.
Over the pole and drop right down there.
And then from there, you turn out ahead of time.
So right.
That's wild.
So when I left Beijing on last Monday, it was three in the afternoon. And when I got to LA, it was noon the same day.
I wish I could say that. And then that Beijing, we ended it at A. I wasn't mocking you. I was just saying it's really cool.
Don't worry. We'll catch you later. We'll discuss this further, Mr. Down.
I'm sorry. I meant no mockeries.
He won't get it.
I know where you.
I know. That's coming up.
Les Downs is the kid that hits the lost nest with a stick and hands you the stick around.
Yeah. Yeah. That's right.
You'd really live here.
It's gonna be a walk.
Um, I just messaged Miss Valen, or Van Meter, rather. She's like, hey, are you on your way? She's like, I'm sorry, I thought it was at six. So she's on her way right now. For some reason, she had the time.
Get a drink.
Next up.
Okay, welcome here now. Uh, nice work session. Uh, I'm going to order on that. We have one item, solid waste and recycling. Greg, you want to begin with that?
Sure. Um, as we've been developing the budget and then also for most of the last year, I've been talking about moving the solid waste landfill operation to an enterprise fund. One of the things that would have to be done in order to do that is we have not been addressing the cost of closure and post closure costs. And I think that at the time that you would create that, you would need to be addressing those different things. So that would come with an increase in rates for the general. And your cost wanted to do that in combination with the, um, the budget. The current draft you have, the budget, has solid waste still being in the general fund because there hasn't been that decision made. But it is a utility operation. It would also help us if we get more involved in recycling. I prepared a draft budget for the recycling part and it's projecting doing curbside pickup. The reason that I have that in there is I think it's important if the council is interested in doing recycling, that you either get serious about it or forget it. When you're doing just drop off recycling, you collect somewhere in the ten to twelve percent range of what's produced. If you do curbside, it can be well over fifty. So I mean, you can, it's a substantial increase when you start doing that. The problem with it is you gotta charge for the services you're providing. And the budget that I put together had a five dollar a month of charge for recycling. Is that fair? That would be on your utility bill. But only five dollars a month, that sounds. Yeah. Well, it would be helpful if we could buy the equipment needed to do it, not in there, you know, like fund it upfront, like a truck and compost turner. And then there's a screen you gotta give those.
Do you have all that in that budget that you?
Yeah.
When do you think we would have that budget?
Um, I could distribute that right away. That's not a problem.
I think it'd be a good idea.
I gave a copy of it to Kelly so that she could review it. And I haven't heard anything back. But that's part of what she wants to talk about tonight is the current situation with TerraFirma. Um, the China situation has hit in every recycling operation, really hard. It, uh, they're literally, the markets are just drying up right now. And so part of this is, um, in the past, a lot of recycling operations have been able to make it on what they sold the stuff for. Now you can sell it for about zero. So you might still be able to get rid of it, but the cost is where it's not covering all of it anymore. And what it does is it brings tonight something that I think we tend to ignore is that, um, things that you get rid of for recycling is still your garbage. You pay to get rid of your garbage. Why do you think it should be free to get rid of your recycling stuff? And one of the quotes I heard a long time ago is the biggest disservice to recycling we've done in this country is aluminum, because now people think they should be paid for their garbage. And typically, if it costs, say, thirty dollars a ton to process, regular municipal solid waste, recycling goods are around seventy. So it's almost double. And one of the things that shows up that is like, for instance, there's been some discussion about doing glass recycling. We can do that, but we pay the cost of taking a truckload up to broom field and back. And you don't take a semi to broom field for free. So it's not that you can't do it, it's how much money you wanna put into the operation.
Is this a good time to even consider this if the market is?
Um, we could time it better and see if, if something happens better with China, but just based on what we're doing with China right now, I'm not looking for improvement for long term. Um, I, I think if anything, it gets worse or before it gets better.
You said something about you met with somebody when you were at the CML convention.
Yeah, we had, we had a board session on that. And there were a couple of different people there. And, um, of course, the company plastic, the recycling. And the big thing that came out of it was the China deal right now. And of course, it just seems to be getting worse instead of better.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't know what they're, I think I gave you those cards, did not. Did you ever contact them to see where, where they're at with recycling at this point in time?
Like the last one or?
Well, either one of them.
I remember giving it to this area. I'll check.
Okay.
Um, but the, uh, yeah, one of the things that they talked about in those sessions was getting the, the bins, kinda like we have for solid waste or for just garbage throwing away. I, I think we could easily reduce the cost of that by just having people get plastic bags, blue plastic bag bins and stand out from other ones that just stick that out. Those, uh, those collection bins are about a hundred bucks a piece, maybe a little bit more. And we could buy it a whole lot less expensive if you just had to bag up the recyclables.
I think that would be maybe a start, you know, and then hopefully gradually maybe move into the containers download.
Now, the, the problem with the containers is even the ones we use in town here, um, those are designed for side load solid waste trucks, which are one hundred percent automated. We're not doing that in town, but that's what they're designed for. So they're designed where the truck just reaches out, grabs it and dumps it and puts it back now. It's a very efficient operation. But that, if you go to bins like that, you should do that for recycling too. You should buy them side loader.
You know, you had mentioned that, you know, one of the biggest fills that we have at the, is, is the land or grass and trees and that type of stuff.
Yard waste.
Yard waste materials, I think was one of the biggest fields that.
That's typical in any landfill.
Another thing, though, is compost. Majority of the product that goes into the landfill is something that can be composted.
Hmm.
I think if we were to exercise an ability to have a, an area where we could dig a hole and turn it with machinery periodically.
Right on the surface, you don't have to dig a hole.
Well, whatever the.
But it, uh, and, and I, I think that the advantage of that is when it's done, it produces really good fertilizer. And if people see that that product's produced and they can have it for free, just to haul it off, you're going to get more and more support from the program.
The same thing, we have a similar discussion with woodchips.
Same thing.
Someone had the great idea of, you know, creating mulch for your, your garden when you, when you put your garden down for the winter.
We could chip trees and branches.
And then the idea just sort of didn't go anywhere, but it seemed economic to me.
Um, I would say woodchippers are very expensive. They can be. Um, you can also rent them. You know, they have big ones for rent, the big for mirrors. And so to me, if you did something like that, you'd start out by renting it and determine how many days you'd be using it.
The city has done that in the past with every, yeah.
Right.
Maybe we did, yeah. Maybe that's where it went, yeah.
So in your budget for the recycling, did you figure in compactors?
That, you mean like leaving them on sites of like commercial and stuff or?
No, like, okay, we're gonna gather, gather all these recyclables, they've gotta be compacted and bundled.
Um, not generally.
So you're just gonna have massive piles?
Uh, most of that stuff, the processors want delivered unbundled because it's, they have to then pull it apart and sort it. So the problem, the challenge with that is you're carrying a lot of volume and very little weight.
Very little.
Can we ask?
Yeah, I was gonna, Kelly, we just walked in. Why don't you come to, come up front? Cause we're discussing the solid waste and probably have some valid information that we could discuss.
Okay.
And we're discussing the recycling, various products, going forward with it. Uh, do we do curbside pickup? What do we do? So, uh, you know, you're, he was talking about the status of your operation. Maybe that's the place to start with you and then we can take off from there.
Okay.
Kinda give us some information.
Okay. Thank you all for having us here on behalf of TerraFirma. Um, my name's Kelly Van Meter, for those of you that don't know me. And I apologize for being late and keeping you waiting. So to answer some of your questions, TerraFirma has been in operation since, for about four years now. We're almost on our fifth year. And we divert, on average, three hundred to three hundred and fifty hundred per year. And what's currently going on with the market is we decline in what we are able to get for final product. Speaking of baled material, the products, um, we're, we're getting about half of what we normally receive for, say, a bundle of cardboard or a bale of cardboard. And that's happening through the last year. The reason for that decline in the market is, one, due to tariffs and two, uh, not having domestic mills. Some of you may have heard about China's wall or China's sword, which is basically their pushback on buying supply contracts from the US. So with those two, um, issues on our hands, we are not currently sustainable, which is not something that we planned on happening this early into our existence because it was somewhat unforeseeable. The pushback from China has not only shut down small material recovery facilities, but large material recovery facilities in the United States. What will, that leads me to the point, TerraFirma is, is not going to be in existence much longer if we don't have, um, a subsidy at some certain price. So that, that's the hub situation, we call it the hub.
Do you have, you know, closer, not times, but information? Long term with this China deal, is there, is there any kind of idea as to how long this might last or are they just saying they know it's indefinite? What's their thoughts?
I, I've heard five to seven years. And how true that is, I don't really know. I don't know if anybody knows. It's almost like playing the stock market. We hope that you made the right choice.
You know, the big thing is we wanna try to be able to extend the life of our landfill. And right before you walked in, we were talking about the yard waste, which is a huge thing that comes in our landfill. And if we did something with that, uh, I guess we would just have to get an idea as to how, how much actually goes into the landfill with yard waste. Over thirty times and how long if we were to do that and be able to get rid of it, how long or how long it would extend the life of our landfill just with the yard waste.
It'd be huge.
I'm not sure if you have, if you need team to work on that to get an idea.
Well, it'd be really, it'd be really hard to get an accurate count. The, the typical is fifty-five to sixty percent in the landfill.
And the Santa Clara funded a study at the local landfill in two thousand and seventeen. Remember that code?
Yeah.
And that was the percentage, fifty-five to sixty percent is what they believe to be plant, uh, yard waste as well as food compost.
I guess the big challenge there was how do we get the community to take just their yard waste instead of bundling it up with everything else? Cause I think that's what a lot of people.
Uh, it would be an education process.
Do you believe that if you were to gain more recyclables from the community, that would positively affect your bottom line in terms of sustainability?
Yes. Uh, we would have to look at how to handle more volumes and acquire the capital, the upfront capital to take on more curbside. In other words, we can't, we cannot take on curbside material right now with the, um, equipment we have in place. We would have to upgrade our equipment to take on more volumes, but it would increase the bottom line.
And do you have the capabilities and the area to take on such an increase in, uh, equipment?
Yes. The facility can take on more material. But man, man, manpower, we cannot.
And the other key being recyclables just aren't producing any revenue right now.
Correct.
And so, and so we would probably have to subsidize their operation.
Are there any efficient incineration technologies? I know that was a big, it's called wasted energy.
EPA is not big on that anymore.
Uh, in fact, the EPA, I don't know, the EPA is looking at ways to divert material out of the landfill and, and they focus, Santa Clara's, uh, Colorado Department of Public Health Environment focuses primarily on recycling, reducing, reusing, and all the, all those, what we would all.
So incineration's not a viable alternative.
It's not an option.
Not, not in Colorado?
No.
Back to, you know, Carlos's question about being able to become more sustainable with your bottom line, I don't know if you wanna tell us or maybe give it to Greg and Greg to pass it off to us later on, uh, what that cost would be that you are looking at, that you'd have to increase, you know, equipment to, to make it sustainable? And what items would make it more sustainable?
Okay. The items that would make it more sustainable are cardboard, which is the, the easiest material to retrieve because there is almost every restaurant, liquor store, um, any retail operation receives cardboard. And that material is thrown both off through and right in the top of your dumpster. So if we were diverting cardboard out of, out of dumpsters and into cardboard containers, which Twin and Barrow is currently doing, but they're not making, you know, they're going to, uh, twenty thousand a year. But it, it's also difficult for them to sustain that operation. If we could extract all that cardboard and recycle it, we would, uh, realize revenues probably in, in tens of thousands because that is the number one easiest product to sell.
Is that stateside? That's not necessarily going overseas. Cardboard is one of the things that's done here.
Correct.
Unlike plastics and stuff, so, um.
However, now it's producing less than half what it was not that long ago.
That's exactly correct. This time last year, I'll just put that out for, for the public to hear this, that this time last year, we had, um, received about eighteen thousand dollars in cardboard revenue. This year, we're about seven thousand. That's the decline.
Same volume?
Same volume.
Or price?
So just much as they're talking about the tariffs and the effects of China taking stuff, aren't they also talking about opening plants in the states?
Correct.
We don't know which way it's gonna go, but that's a possibility, China opening plants stateside.
Did you arrange that?
You know, he talked about that a little bit. The, the language barrier, you know, really hurt us.
That was one of the, that was one of the things that came out of that CML session that we attended, that there were some Chinese companies that were thinking of settling in the United States, but I'm not sure. Have you heard anything about that?
I, I pretty much, what Rusty, what Rusty said is exactly what I've heard. And that timeframe to build domestic mills is again, an unknown. How long will it take?
It's years.
It's years. It's years. It's just not a situation that any recycling facility can really foresee, including the material recovery facilities in Denver. I spoke to Altria Waste, I spoke to Bio-Pel, I spoke to all these different entities that are in the recycling industry, and they are all seeing a pushback on prices and, and how they're going to operate. So it's a, it's a widespread problem. What's unfortunate about our situation and our community is that we've worked hard as a community, the recyclers have to implement recycling and to sustain it. And we do have probably about ten percent of population recycling, which is around a thousand to twelve hundred people, um, counting operation. And those people find it invaluable. And I think that if we had, if we can make it easier and more convenient, we'd have more people recycling. But all those recyclers bring material to us and drop it off. They're ambassadors for TerraFirma. They're not, they're not getting it picked up. So I call them, those recyclers, our, our foundation. Now, if we were going out and we were picking it up, I think we'd have more participation because it's easy and it's convenient. But again, having to get from point A to point B, which is if you're picking it up and bringing it to the hub, you have to have the infrastructure for the hub to take on more material. But yes, it will increase the bottom line and increase, um, total production, which includes taking materials out of landfill to increase the life of the finite amount of time that we have left, whatever that may be.
And I think that's the key to what the elephant in the room is, that we've been all kinda talking about is how much time do we have left on this landfill? And it's not gonna be on us when that thing is getting closed down. It's gonna be on another DAAS. I think the decision that we could make now could potentially give us an extension of life, maybe ten, fifteen years, depending on how much we're able to start getting in recyclables and keeping it out of the landfill and then still repurposing it as an environmentally conscientious maneuver. Two, we could also start a new industrialization in Trinidad, which is between Denver and Albuquerque, where are there any other MRFs or material recycling facilities between there and there?
No.
So that might be another opportunity for us to create new jobs in an eco-friendly in, in the industry. That could really be another pivotal factor for how we're trying to progress Trinidad. I mean, I don't want Trinidad just to be the marijuana town like it has been, the gas town or the coal town, but I think we have an opportunity now where we could use some of these resources to pivot into a new kind of industry in Trinidad, which we're a nation of consumers. Storage unit facilities outrank the number of Starbucks and McDonald's combined in this country right now. And we know that there's a Starbucks in every corner in every metropolitan area because we are a nation of consumers and we continue to hold on to things until we're like, I put that in that closet for ten years, I don't need this anymore. And it just all ends up going into a landfill. And that's what I see from my perspective with our, uh, mini storage facility. Um, I think we have an opportunity here and if we can help facilitate TerraFirma in some capacity, I think it helps us because we're saving our landfill, we're buying more time that we don't have to have the EPA come down, cause then where there's, how many years do we have to monitor it after we close down the facility? Ten?
Twenty.
Twenty years that we have to monitor for methane, uh, and other kinds of water taintings? And, and that saves us and, and I feel that that would be good stewardship on our behalf for the future of Trinidad as well. Because just like how you make a home, we all want our toilets to flush. No one talks about it. It's not the sexy thing. You bring people into your home for a housewarming, they're like, hey, I got a new toilet, wanna come see it? We don't discuss that. And we don't discuss our landfill either, but yet it's a pivotal part of our infrastructure.
Well, it's not like maybe the way to start this would be, you know, get something that costs, integrate to see what that subsidy might be, getting that budget out of this.
Yeah, that'll help me. Help that budget.
Let's take, I think, taking a look at, uh, uh, like Carlos was saying is maybe setting the stage, maybe for the, if this thing gives at some point in time where China opens up or new factories open up in the, in the United States or to deliver this product, I think let's get, let's get a, let's get a ready approach to this. But there are some things I think that we can do with yard waste and maybe, uh, the cardboard.
Are we exploring all state of the art? I know the technology is changing very rapidly because we're not the only community in this country with space with this. And I know there are things with telemetry and, you know, figuring out, you know, do you have an even amount in, you know, what's your topography look like? Um, are we, is it worth?
In the landfill or speaking?
Yeah, in the landfill. Cause I know they can, there, there are ways of increasing efficiency a lot. And I know I asked the question about five, six years ago and the answer was pretty much. Um, but has anything happened that allows us to manage or is that worth looking into? I guess is what I'm asking. Have things changed? Will they ask you that question?
I, I know. You should correct in that statement that there are ways to see if you're efficiently utilizing your landfill and if you're making the best use of the space. But it doesn't solve the problems of landfill cover, um, you know, what's leaking out or or what those regulations.
I'm thinking of a two-pronged approach or a multi-pronged approach.
Yeah. There is some validity to what you're saying and it could help. For example, some landfills build, um, vertical holes within the fill and cover as opposed to covering on the top of the surface. It does get costly because you have to have different equipment to, to bury different ways, um, but it is possible and it is a good remedy for the time being. I think some of the best remedies for landfill life expansion include, uh, food waste. Everybody throws away food and it can be composted and then that compost can be used for gardening, mulch, uh, for resale. We have yard waste that comes in all summer long when people are trimming their trees. Uh, they need to get rid of it. They need a place to get rid of it, so they're willing to just drop it off and have it trimmed and put into their compost. But those are not your, your major landfill killers because they deteriorate, they're not contaminate. Plastic will stay there for hundreds of years and not deteriorate and fill up space, you know, to some degree. They're, they're two different elements. Cardboard, you know, it, it deteriorates to some degree, it's as paper, but aluminum cans, metal cans, uh, paint, antifreeze, oil, light bulbs, batteries. People don't have a place or a resource to take their, those different items. So forgive me for saying this out loud, but most of it goes into landfill by no fault of their own. They don't have a resource. So many people have a bunch of batteries, light bulbs, antifreeze, oil, paint, just put in the ground. There's nowhere else to put it. We could eventually realize an operation that has a composting pit, that has, uh, tree trimming and, and yard waste remediation, that has, uh, hazardous waste, um, solutions like antifreeze goes here, oil goes here, batteries go there, light bulbs go here. We can't take that on because we can't assume the liability and it's too expensive. But if you started to compartmentalize each one of those different areas, the amount of material that would come out of landfill would be extraordinary because you're, you're, you're giving people a solution to their problem. Whereas right now, this is the common thing a lot. Well, how do I recycle? Like you have to bring it out to, I don't have time for that. I just don't have time to do that. And they say, I want to, but I, I really don't, I can't bring it in. So what we end up finding out is that people want to, but we're not able to system the process, so they don't. If we made it easy and we made it convenient and we gave them a one-stop shop for all these different problems, they'd show up with yard waste, paint, oil, antifreeze, all of it in their back of their truck and they'd say, okay, this goes here, including, um, like habitat and humidity products. So old lumber, old rocks, old windows, old doors. That shouldn't be going to the landfill. People can reuse that stuff if it's, if it's, if it's. So old lumber, old rocks, old windows, old doors. That shouldn't be going into landfill. People can reuse that stuff if it's reusable. But because they don't have anywhere to take it or they don't wanna dispose it, it all gets tossed. So in these larger cities, you'll see them actually set up shop so that when people pull in, just like they go to TerraFirma, they say, all my cardboard goes here, all my plastic goes here, all my paint goes here, all my antifreeze here. Um, and I'm gonna give you two doors and a toilet. That's all usable. People show up, they pick through, they take the material they want, and you're solving, you're killing, you know, several birds with one stone. Going back to how you save life, you know, how do you manage that space in landfill? The way you manage landfill is important, I'm reaching to the choir, like, because you have to, it's a multifaceted solution. Your cover, I know landfills that shred tires and they put it on top. They take molten and put it on top. The cover is a big component of how to manage it.
And it removes a lot of life. It's a requirement today because of EPA rules, but you gotta put six inches of dirt on top of the landfill. Well, that's a lot of volume. But I don't know anything. I don't know fraction that you know for a two-year. But I mean, they are inventing new materials, a substitute for soil, for landfill cover. Well, there's a lot of options. Like Kelly mentioned, tires are one because you can almost not get rid of them. If you could get a tub grinder and bring them to nothing and throw them in the landfill, that could be your cover.
You know, we have, we have some issues that I see that could really create a problem with the landfill. Actually, a couple of issues, you know, with all of the construction we have going on in town. Creates a lot of additional landfill. Uh, you know, and unfortunately, I don't know where the weather is going. It just seems like it gets worse every year. Uh, we had one bad hailstorm two years ago. We took them out of.
Takes a lot of money out of that.
Roofing went into the landfill. So it's going to decrease our timeframe to have to close that landfill. You know, and we're right now, from a budgetary standpoint, we're having to come up with, and it's, we've talked about this, about putting X number of dollars each year into our budget for post-closure. So if there's a way that we could extend that life, maybe we don't have to put so much money into the budget for post-closure so quick.
Well, two things that we could do is we could build a restricted-use landfill.
Right.
Which takes, you cut it into three different pieces and one of them you put appliances. The other ones you do construction debris. And they don't come under the same rules as a municipal solid waste landfill.
Right.
And in some cases, some of that stuff is recyclable. So, you know, there's companies will come and just take all of the appliances. Um, but you're not putting them in the landfill and therefore they're not adding, they're not shortening the life. When they're inert materials, you can just take them and bury them and start another one of those things. You don't have to have the leachate collection. You don't have to have the methane monitoring. You don't have to have any of that kind of stuff. Because nothing happens to it. Just sits there.
Well, I really think it's time to get, you know, just a plan together and then see what direction you can explore that with your E-team and see what, what direction we wanna take with this and give us some ideas. I think that's kind of where we're at at this point in time. I think it sounds like we're all of the same opinion that we want to extend our life, we wanna do recycling to extend the life. Uh, now how do, the how to?
Question there. I might say something. I think another problem that we're having is with the transportation cost. I think we have to look into that also with this plan that we're gonna try to set up because it's probably so expensive to ship, like you said at the beginning of the meeting, to get a truck and ship it to Groomfield and stuff like that. I think, I think that's where a lot of problems are starting with, 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 you know, meter there. And, you know, so maybe we could add that to the agenda and look at that. I'm not agenda, but the budget and the plan to see if there's some way we could kind of balance that out between the city and whatever's going on because, you know, we're worried about our landfill and like I said about, I know a lot about that landfill. And there's a lot of things that I'd like to say, but I don't wanna say it this time, but, yeah, Kelly, I think we have to go for.
I think you was talking about transportation costs, which is, you know, a concern. And, you know, I know, you know, from the building industry, the cost to get a truck was around five hundred bucks. If I'm not sure if that's correct for waste or not.
It's harder than that.
As it really probably is.
And what's happened now is a lot of trucking industry is having to go off of digital locks. So they cannot work overtime. With those digital locks, they've increased their prices to compensate for not being able to do overtime work. So at one point, we were able to get a load for nine hundred dollars or ten, a thousand dollars. Now they want to all of fourteen hundred dollars because they're in, they're in a tight situation to make money based on digital logging. Um, going back to glass, I'm sure that's what you were talking about. Glass is a, is a complex material to take because these facilities want it either crushed or non-crushed. They want it shipped in whole or not whole. And dealing with it is similar to dealing with light bulbs. There's a cost to deal with the liability. It's a risk. We have people working with glass. You have to have the right safety equipment on. You have to build the right type of building so it's somewhere that's in danger. But we don't take on any of that responsibility because we can't afford to have some type of liability issues. But there is a lot of glass that goes into landfill also. So you can use that for landfill cover. Awesome. That's why I was saying that.
But then it would be, you'd crush it so it wouldn't take up near the volume.
That's right. It'd crush it hard to putting it in.
Efficient landfill cover.
Efficient landfill cover.
Another thing too is by having a combination of reduced landfill, recycling, composting, all of those things that will help us in the future because one of the things we gotta start doing like really quick here is start coordinating with other communities in the area and developing a regional landfill. And the less stuff we have to truck to that landfill, the less expensive it's gonna be for our residents. If you can recycle and you can compost and you can do all sorts of different things, it doesn't have to be all to some very expensive landfill. When you, when you build what's called a subtitle D landfill, they are just one cell. This was ten years ago. I think they were four hundred thousand dollars.
And that's, that's double.
Probably is right now. Cause I haven't built one for a long time.
I just had this conversation. And some subtitle D landfill regulations are currently in place. The state of Colorado has enacted those regulations. But they are saying to, um, they are, they are saying to recycling facilities and municipalities, look, we wanna be on your side. We're trying to, if it's possible for you to recycle and, um, and landfill. So they, they don't, they don't, they don't regulate those.
I'm sorry.
For all of these. This is my dad Ken.
Hey, Ken. Sorry, Ken. Sorry, we're late.
Point being that with those subtitle D regulations, they are currently in place. The only question is, do they actually come down on a municipality for not adhering to them? At this point, the state is not doing that because they know people have to have a landfill to utilize. So if they came down and enacted every regulation, I think great, it's like this, very few would still exist. So they try to give you remedies and solutions and help out.
But when it's full, you gotta start using it. And, and the other thing that even with subtitle D landfill, one thing that makes them far more efficient is if you do what's called a vale fill. So you, you veil the garbage and create two thousand pound vales and, um, it's amazing how much less space garbage takes up when you do that to it.
That's exactly right. And at Terra.
When you put eleven hundred pounds of pressure on it.
You were going to my next point. Now, at TerraFirma, we have the ability at some points, or collaboratively speaking, to have walk-in garbage trailers where that material is compacted. So basically, a refuge truck pulls up, dumps the material, it compacts. And then that material goes up and it's in a big square vale into the landfill, which is compacted material in a vale form, not in a compact form. It all, TerraFirma also has the ability to transfer if that, if it ever came to that. So it, it.
At this stage.
That's right. But in the future, the lay of the land is appropriate for sale.
What's your proximity to the landfill from where the recycling facility is at TerraFirma?
Next door.
It's a, is it abutting to it?
We're right next to it.
During the old sawmill.
So that makes it very convenient then? So if you have some debris that comes in that's not recyclable that someone puts in accidentally, you just are right there and you can put it in the landfill or have a.
And vice versa. Someone brings things that can be recycled to the landfill.
It's right next door.
Mm-hmm. That's true.
So do we have an ideal, we were talking five dollars added on to the monthly utility bills. How many people receiving utility bills? What kind of numbers? Just a rough estimate.
I think I used an estimate around four thousand.
Around four thousand?
Or eight hundred and four thousand. That's in town.
Right.
And this would include tipping fees? Um, this would be for recycling. Okay, but you said now people aren't getting paid for the recycling. Is the opposite true that you're paying tipping fees for getting rid of your recycling? Well, you do do that. I mean, it's different. I mean, you pay the transportation costs. Those five dollars include all of that. Yeah.
So, you know, besides the, the cost of the recycling, like say this five dollars per month, uh, we also talked about having to maybe increase fees for the landfill.
Yes.
Uh, so.
Because we, we really do need to start setting money aside for that closure cost.
What would you say that additional cost from that would be?
I would, I would suggest the same thing for the landfill.
So we're looking at, if we do both, we're looking at about a ten dollar bill per household.
Yep.
Yeah, per. Okay.
It would be that or we would have to charge more when people come in at the gate.
Right.
And I'm sorry, I go there at six dollars. That is super cheap. When I lived in Summit County, just to drive into the, the landfill up there was a thirty dollar minimum and they weighed you. And then you come out and there's an additional fee on top of that. So even if you have one bag of trash, it was thirty dollars. Because they wanted to promote using the, um, trash collectors as the people going in at the landfill to keep laypeople out of there from avoiding, you know, scavenging and other things like that.
Ten years ago, it was four dollars.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, yeah, we've done a big increase percentage-wise, but in the grand scheme of things, at that rate, we're not gonna be able to fully close it down when the time comes because we're not charging appropriate fees.
I think we as a city too have the responsibility to get caught about, about construction and stuff like this going on. We, we as a city, we have the responsibility to charge these contractors for dumping in there. Down there, we waived forty-five thousand dollars of fees at the landfill that the city lost out because somebody tore down a building, well, you could dump it in a landfill. We didn't, you know, we could stand in all kinds of arguments and stuff like that, but if we don't enforce them, we're good already. We're good already.
That's true.
You know? And, and the problem is, is that we have to look after our own. And I don't think we are really looking after our own when you waive that kind of fees for construction material. I don't care who it is. If I gotta pay, if I gotta pay thirty, if you're gonna raise my bill ten dollars or whatever, then Joe Sam Jones has to pay that ten dollars too. Don't waive a fee. Cause we lost out forty-five thousand dollars.
Do, do you know, have, have you done any checking to see other comps with other communities as to what their landfill fees are?
Um, I have not.
I think it'd be a good idea. That way it gives us a feelist of, maybe we need to do.
And on the other side of that, since we changed the paying process and everything at the dump, if we notice an increase, what's the increase we've noticed in revenue coming in off of the dump? We should have seen an increase.
Well, yeah, because we were, we were having sixty-seven thousand dollars a year just lost revenue.
Correct.
Cause it would go towards your utility bill versus being paid at point of sale.
Well, most people would say you're charging to whatever and then you wouldn't find it.
Charge it to wherever. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they give them a false address or something.
Correct. So I mean, I would like to know, all of this stuff's a step in the right direction as far as the money creating its own enterprise fund for the dump. And this stuff, I think are all steps in the right direction. That's, even at five bucks off four thousand, twenty K a month, two hundred and forty thousand a year, that's a good step towards creating a solution, subsidizing TerraFirma or whatever we need to. That's steps, definitely positive steps.
And I think for us to go and reinvent the wheel and try to find another facility that we'd have to implement new technology and equipment and infrastructure, kind of puts us behind the eight ball to where we have an organization in the community that's already doing it.
Well, that's what I brought up in that one meeting. If you remember, there is a certain way the city or something could help, like maybe purchase or do something, some equipment or whatever they would need to, to help them out.
Right.
You know, I, I asked that question before.
And I think all of those conversations have led to where we are right now. To where we're like, okay, where are we gonna make a tangible effort that's gonna help?
Yeah.
Doesn't differ that much from what it is. We have an obligation to police animals. We have an obligation to take care of our trash.
Exactly. We subsidize them as well.
And to that point about running the facility or whatever it takes to rebuild, that's why Ken is here. I asked him to be here. He is the, the individual who maintains his, uh, equipment and keeps it all running and knows, and knows the ins and outs of that. And that is, for lack of a better word, it's, you know, we gotta tie her by the toe. It's not always easy. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar baler in our mail building, which is where all the material goes. Uh, when it goes down, he's, he's fixing it. Uh, but that, the reason I talk about this isn't because of what he's doing. It's such a critical part of the process to keep all that infrastructure running. We have a vertical baler. We have heavy equipment that we use. We have skid steer. We have trucks, trailers. We have the loader. We have loaders when a semi comes in and we have to load forty-four, forty-four thousand pounds or twenty-two ton. He's the man that's behind the scenes. And it's just to the point where we are looking at this and saying, how do we go forward? That was the reason for the discussion today. How do we go forward? It's, it's a, it's a complex, you know, question that we have many answers to, but which one of them makes it?
And that hundred and fifty thousand dollar baler was one you shopped hard for and bought used that y'all had to work on. I mean, we're not talking, that wasn't a new piece of equipment, I remember.
That's absolutely true. We put it in with what we had and the resources we had.
Luckily, we had the infrastructure to support it.
Exactly.
Or we wouldn't have been able to afford it.
What kind of a concrete slab is typically needed for, uh, equipment like that? Five inch, six?
We put a six inch, we put a six inch concrete slab with steel reinforcement in it so that whatever equipment that we brought in and out, including loads with the equipment is what we needed to support any type of industrial equipment that goes in.
Six inch.
Yeah, it is an advantage having a local company that understands recycling material.
And has the connections too.
Well, you know, it sounds like, you know, if you do a little bit more work on this, you know, I'm glad you're here. We've had some good discussion tonight. It gives me a better feel, I'm sure gives council a better feel as to the direction that we wanna look at at least, you know, begin to look at. And let's see what comes up.
Appreciate your support.
Yeah. Is there anything else going that you wanna add or?
No, she said there's only hamburgers and fresh meat.
Sucker. Doctor, Alex Carlos of us pizza factory. I got a rare candy for you.
There you go. Appreciate it.
It's delicious. You gotta go buy one.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks guys so much.
Work session and we got about another fifty minutes for our regular session to begin. So thanks for coming. Appreciate all the info. Let's take, take a break.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
Hi Brian.